I didn't hear the clock strike.
You all set? You'll have to be a voting member. It's not here yet.
Can I do that from here?
Well, we'll have to vote on minutes and stuff.
So are you seating done or dead?
Yes. All right, we have no, oh, any public comment that isn't on the agenda for a subject that isn't on the agenda. Okay. No public hearings. Al Patno wanted to come up and just a conceptual review lots on Silver Hill Drive, which is on public slate.
So it's actually a couple of different things. It's conceptual as much as just a little bit of a question, you know, a little questionnaire trying to figure things out. I think you're all familiar with that site. I recently purchased two of the lots on Silver Hill as well as the back parcel, which contains about 50 acres. In doing so, I also adopted the road. It was never deeded out to the association. So one of the projects I need to do is to actually do that. I already have, my attorney's already drafted the documents to do that at some point in time. And once we actually have a chance to have survey, go through it, and actually create a document just for the road, that's our next step.
Can you put out a plan so we can just be sure we're all on the same page?
So this is the property right next to or abutting the boat launch facility goes on.
So this is not the same property as the...
That's correct. It's actually up above behind that.
Okay, so it's all of this land up here.
So with the purchase, I have this, these two. So basically, all comes through here, these two, and these two, as well as the road itself.
And this is Bonneman Road?
Bonneman's here, and this is Silver Hill.
Is this the association that's non-mandatory, you have to join it?
Uh, no. It was a mandatory association as part of the subdivision. So your subdivision was approved through planning board in 1986. Through that process, the plan and the regulations for that were recorded. A little strangely because the private road agreement as well as homeowners association agreement were all mixed into one ugly mess. So we're actually separating that out because there's a beach agreement, there's a road agreement, there's a homeowners association. So we're kind of splitting those apart to get back to reality. And once I actually have that, like I said, Victor, I have no problem sending them up to you. You really don't have any guidelines for those, but you know, it certainly doesn't hurt to have you guys take a look at them, see if there's anything in there that you do about.
How many lots are in that association?
Um, there's seven lots that are part of the subdivision.
Okay, so it's just a subdivision that needed that association?
That needed it?
I'm questioning, I'm just, I'm trying to fill in some pieces here. This whole area is nothing but a...
Yeah, so let me stop back 1974. So 1974, it was a separation of ownership within the family. Ames Prentice still actually retains this property here. This one parcel was actually subdivided out by itself. The remainder was kept in the, I'm not sure of the first name of Ames, but one of the Ames family members for the remainder of it. In 86, the subdivision was created. The subdivision was created in 86 with poor engineering. I'll keep it at a simple term. And this is that subdivision plan here, which basically is a mimic of this. I just took some additional information from other deeds and tied it in. So this subdivision plan shows Silver Hill and the seven lots which are called out. And they didn't tie this one in, which is a piece that's the bad engineering end of it. They also didn't tie out the abutting next door, or the abutting next door, or across the street at all. So it's a, the subdivision is a little incomplete. It leaves a few things out there to deal with. But again, all manageable within, you know, today's world. So what I'm, what I'm working on trying to do...
Before you go on, so this is the shore.
Correct.
This was the lot that was proposed.
The kayak business.
The kayak business was proposed on. So you said that you bought this, which, which...
So I have lot five, lot six.
Okay.
There's two parcels here on the water.
Okay, so these little waterfront access parcels?
Correct.
For lack of a better term?
Yep. And then the entirety of the road, which actually comes all the way through here, 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 and this entire parcel back here, along with a two-acre parcel.
So is this part of the road here?
Yeah, so it, according...
On paper, it's at least part of the road?
On paper, it's part of the road.
But this is the road that's there now, and this is the real steep hill.
Right, this, the road actually does turn here and come here, and it stops somewhere about here. Same thing here, it turns and has a weird turn. And the road, based on information we had, we're able to overlay, the road actually doesn't, even in here, looks like it actually comes onto private property. Get a different, different piece of the equation to try to fix. And again, this piece goes all the way back to the abutting piece, which probably everyone's familiar with, which was the pickpocket property that was just recently heavily logged. And by the way, just so everyone's on record, I did not log this property. It was logged prior to my... I was, I was actually, I came up to look at the property and they told me they were selectively cutting. They were selective, selected everything.
Selective, everything considered firewood?
Pretty much. Or anything on two, the only things they left were pretty much heavy, steep slopes was what they stayed away from. So again, that's the property in its general format. Prior to buying as well as after buying, a couple of things I had done, as I met with Victor, Russ, I also stopped by, talked to fire department, just to go over public safety on this because it's obvious. As soon as you pull up there, you can see that the road itself, it's a dirt road, non-maintained, heavy slopes, not easily manageable to typical subdivision rights.
Lot of water runoff too.
Severe water runoff in this corner coming through here. So the, the top of this runs heavily down here and actually then follows this stone wall and pitches out here, crosses over a pathway here, and into a big marsh wetland over here. But because of the way this was cut, it actually, everything from here down that slopes through, actually this is cut into a funnel shape, so you have high bank on both sides pitching and just transitioning right around that corner. And that funnel is carried through the stone wall as well as along this edge until it hits the road edge. Some of it makes it across the road, I would imagine, in the spring, and then some of it carries across. You can see the silt washout that comes across into the Ames Prentice property.
Yep.
So we've been going back and forth with a couple of things again. My first big thing, I'm a builder developer, my main goal is actually to be able to build something up here for myself. But my purpose for buying this along with these is to have a little more control over what happens. Secondly, if I'm able to do it, it works out well for me to be able to balance money so that way I can actually build what I want here and kind of come out balanced by building and selling something over here. So that's my ultimate goal, sort of, is understand where I'm coming from. I don't, you know, one of the things I've looked at was you have a family compounding and I have a son and daughter and that, there's a beautiful spot for up there, but again, that's well down the road. My daughter's just entering into college next year, so it's nothing I have to worry about at this point in time.
It comes along fairly quickly.
I was, I was saying, I actually just...
From experience.
Yeah, I just took my daughter on a tour of UNH today, and it was flashing back to when I just brought her to, you know, kindergarten for the first time. And she's like, why does that matter to you? I'm like, honey, when you have kids, you'll be thinking the same thing. It's kind of strange. So when I met with fire safety, one of the, of course, big concerns was this. Not only during the spring, winter, fall, it's all the time. Basically, their equipment, other than the forestry stuff, he says can't even come down this section. That slope is running 19 to 21%, depending on which plan I looked at. When you look at the topography as it comes across and down, the roadway certainly could be modified to get to 9% from here to here. But to do that, you'd be talking a funnel and a creation of a 21-foot cut right here in the middle, which I don't think helps anything. I think it just pushes more water and causes more problems. So I've been trying to figure out different ways to maybe make it better. One of my concepts was to come up, and I know everyone hates the concept of dead-end roads, but where this already has a T shape here, you could easily come up here, flatten this out.
I was just gonna suggest that.
And then create a T-shaped turnaround. We could actually take this here and actually re-vegetate it to help control the runoff that's coming through. Because right now, if I was to do that based on...
I can't speak for everybody, but I'm gonna assume that if you're doing anything to do water management, and it's still, as long as there's enough room to turn around over here?
Yeah, again, so...
I don't think anybody's gonna contest that.
Yeah, so under your subdivision control laws, it's already a subdivision, but again, I want to build something that I can present, and I also don't want to have...
Well, it's existing non-conforming.
Right, and I don't want to have, I don't want to really try to sell something with a problem. It doesn't present well, it doesn't bear well, and again, my idea is to have something here. So I certainly don't need someone here yelling at me every time they see me. It just doesn't, it doesn't work. Secondly, if I have, I've actually been in an accident when I was younger, motorcycle accident. I believe in fire rescue, I support my town all the time because they saved me. If there's a fire, if there's an emergency, I want someone to be able to get to me, just as much as anything else. And it's the same to whether it's another resident abutting. It just leaves a bad taste in my mouth. If I'm presently the owner of the road, which I adopted and I didn't expect to, I wanted at least try to get it to a condition that works. If I came in here, through this top edge here between these two houses, it's the high point. If I cut through here, around two to three feet, this house actually sits depressed. It would actually flatten out that yard. And I can bring this down into the 10% range. That would pick this up about five or six feet at this tail for the turnaround. But it's more on this side because this side comes back uphill.
So this little width here, that's the actual width of the road, right?
Yes, that's the actual dirt.
Little bit of the narrow section here.
Correct. So the, it's kind of interesting, the, it shows...
It says it's 40 feet.
It's actually 50.
That's the whole width though, right?
Yeah, so the dirt is about 16. The, um, the ownership...
There's no way that road's 40 feet.
Yeah, so it's kind of strange. It's 40 feet from end of pin, from pin to stone wall. The stone wall on this property actually isn't the boundary. So when you do the research of this deed and plan, which was nice because it was done in 74, it's actually from here to an iron pin that actually is still located there, which actually... And again, it's not even shown back here, but it actually gives you exactly 50 feet, which is, I don't think he intended it because he's still, they didn't show it, but that's where it landed coming through.
So what do you need to turn around a vehicle?
The big trucks, I mean, you need a big area. If it's a, you know, if this was opened up up here...
Yeah, so again, this...
And if it was made so you could pull it back up and drive out, then that'd be no issue.
Yeah, right now, you could, you can hit this turn, but you can't go backwards. Because if you go backwards to transition, you're gonna bottom out. I don't care what vehicle it is, for fire suppression, you're gonna bottom out on it, other than the forester.
And the big trucks in the fire station have very low ground clearance, so you don't want to be doing that.
And this is actually a part of the plan of the property here, which is the one that did the boat. And again, actually plan out some of the different percentages that we can carry around. And this is actually from probably enough one of your files, it shows the topography of these lots. So you can actually see the topography comes here and actually turns a corner for that section of the roadway. So it's already there, it's already on a flat plane. Once you get past this corner, it actually just goes way up.
How much are these tiers?
Those are two foot.
Two foot?
Yeah.
So this is this lot here?
This is this lot here, and this is that lot.
All right, yeah, all right.
So, and they actually, these do tie out, which is interesting because this is done in the 70s, this is done in...
Going this way flattens out.
Yeah, it flattens out here.
You're proposing to do is raise this level in here?
It would be, it would be built up here.
Yeah.
If you're, if, again...
It's not a very big area.
Would you, would you just shut down this portion here?
Well, again, it's actually a question.
You got water coming down here, right? Right down the stone wall?
It comes down the stone wall here and dumps this way.
Dumps this, okay, so you don't have any water on that?
No, well, other than what's in the roadway itself.
Okay.
And as you...
So you could put retention areas all the way down?
Yeah, again, I would probably do more of a tiering with, again, with vegetation to tier it down.
Tier it, exactly.
Exactly. Because right now, there's, there's...
Well, I'm saying it because you'd need something to slow it down and...
Well, if we were bringing this back up, we would actually cross slope it, pitching it back this way through here, so it actually hits this natural slope and comes back down as well.
Okay, I got you, yeah, where it levels out.
Yeah, because it's already, it's already doing that. So really, my biggest work is just creating the first tier step here to transition, because again, that's about a five to six foot fill just in this one corner.
Does this lot have a right of way across any of this land? In other words, like if you shut this off here, like this is really steep up here.
Is this built on at all?
No.
No, that was empty. Okay.
You actually have, in the building department right now, they have an application or a pending application coming to you, right?
Yes.
Do they have a site plan with a driveway in it yet?
Yeah, they're, well, that's what we're looking at. Originally, we're trying to get it onto Silver Hill and DPW director brought, you're right. But no, they're now looking at putting it onto Bonneman.
That would make more sense to me.
Yeah, so they have...
It's pretty steep there.
Interesting, right?
Well, we talked about that, so they're gonna kind of angle it, rather than go straight up, they're gonna angle it up so that we can control...
That would probably answer this, right?
Correct. So they have, they have a right to pass and repass. They don't have a right to use it as frontage, and they're not part of the association.
Okay.
So they don't have frontage on the lake?
All right, well, so this one has.
This one has.
This lot has, yeah.
So it's two separate lots, but this lot itself, which the permit would retain to this lot.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this road was, was approved as part of a subdivision?
Correct.
So...
Yeah, back when the buildings was a common problem.
Would you start actually trying to follow its contours through it? Oh, amazing.
If you wanted to eliminate, essentially eliminate that road, does that require...
There's nothing in your, in your regs with regards to discontinuance...
There's anything that says you can't.
Right.
I mean, it's a private road, it's not like a public road.
You can't, so I don't, the only thing you're gonna run to, you can't eliminate access to lots.
Correct.
So you're gonna continue access, upgrade the access in a sense.
Correct, yeah. So the only piece of the equation that doesn't fall within that, and I just had my, one of my engineers throw something together quickly, is that under your regs, you have a reg for 1,000 millimeter feet for a dead-ended road that hits at the T. This ends up a touch over. Based on numbers, it ends up 85 feet over to the T.
But essentially...
Well, is this considered the driveway?
No.
Going up to the back lawn?
No, that's over, that's, so, yeah, that's over way over here.
Well, I think we could leave it at 85 feet.
Well, in essence, it's a dead end now because you can't use this.
Yeah, they actually plowed it here and just buried it.
Yeah.
And there's actually zero turnaround.
I remember saying this, and you don't want to drive up there with a pole.
I pulled up this, and I was surprised I made it.
So when you do this, would you be moving the stone wall back just to...
I, I probably wouldn't, because that slope is already vegetated, so it has mature trees in it. And I think by the time, when you stop playing with stone walls, even though I know where the property line is and it's clearly defined on the deed and on the plan, it just, people freak out over stone walls.
So will this work for, for fire and...
I don't, I mean, it's hard to say looking on paper. I mean, this, if this is a 50-foot?
Yeah, so it's a 50-foot right here.
What's the width of your, actually, the red dotted lines here?
This is about 20 feet is what it's showing.
That'd be too tight to pull it through.
Right, and again, we do, we just...
Like this, this whole corner, everything in here would have to be opened up.
So, yeah, so if you make that a relatively flat area...
And that's why I'm just suggesting maybe push just the wall right to there, and then leave this alone.
Right, and we could possibly just take the wall off here so we keep, retain that vegetation on the fire edge of the slope. I have no problem with that. Again, I'm trying to find a balance for you so I can make it work with what we have without going too...
But there's nothing in the regulations that say that he's gotta come back in with a revision to the, to the subdivision or anything like that in order to eliminate the road.
That's right.
And what would the planning board's authority be to authorize him to do that? Just, he submits a...
He's gonna ask for a waiver to do it because it's over...
Well, if you, so that's, that really becomes a question. Because if I, I can do two things. I can just leave it as is and not touch anything. Or I can go through the whole planning board process for subdivision road.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, what is the planning board process? Because it's, they go through a whole subdivision...
The only one you would have is a full subdivision plan, which I really don't want to get involved with on a...
I have that for just that.
For that. Again, I'm trying to make it better. It would be a little counterproductive on the cost end of things for me.
I mean, how much can, how much can we waive on that?
Well, the question was, is there actually a waiver, was my question.
But if you're gonna waive something, we gotta have, we gotta have an application to do something.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. So we'd have to have, I mean, you'd have to notify the abutters of what you're doing. They'd have to...
I own it.
All of them?
I own the road. I'll notify them.
Right, but I'm just saying, all the abutters have a say when it comes to the road.
No. Not the way it's written, it's really odd.
So they don't have, so none of them have a right of way?
There's no G to that just?
Right now.
They have a right to pass and repass on the road. It's a really, really poorly written document, trust me. You can read, you can get it on, you can pull it online. It's, it talks more about the construction of the house than it does anything else on the whole thing. Not wanting metal roofs and...
Out of the seven lots, how many do you not own?
I own two out of the seven.
Two out of the seven, okay. So there's five lots that...
So myself, like, to me, this seems like a win-win for everyone, right? However, to me, to waive something, I'd, I'd want the abutters to be notified.
Oh, I don't have a problem notifying, I'm just saying...
And have them, and give them a right to come and speak for against. Now, my hunch is, if you talk to them, and this is what I'm gonna do, they might not even show up to the meeting.
Yeah, there's actually, there's actually only three houses that are actually built, so existing, existing, just recently built.
So again, I'm not suggesting this is about any at all.
Oh, no, no, no.
Nothing here is non-binding.
Yeah, well, that's a good point too.
Yeah, you never said that. Everything we're saying now is non-binding.
Oh, I understand. Again, this is, it could, I don't even know if you call it conceptual because it really doesn't apply to a subdivision because I'm not, this, the road issue isn't part of any subdivision. It's me trying to make it better to actually get to the point of actually doing something different.
Well, technically, you don't need a permit to do excavation work on your own property. But where this has got access to other houses, I mean, I would most definitely make sure that all the abutters...
Yeah, so basically, this, this end here, there's nobody living here.
Right, I'm just, like, I'd talk to everybody that owns anything else and just run it by them and make sure they're all on the same page. Because all it takes is one not to like it.
Yeah, again, we, we have to go, again, we have a new beach management plan because it's a shared beach. We have a new roadway agreement that we have to do so that way we can get back on page. They, it's a mess, it's truly a mess. They haven't touched anything in a long time. So it's, you know, they're, they're on shoestrings, there's no money in any accounts, they haven't filed anything with the, with the state in years. It's, it's basically a defunct system at the moment.
So when you measured your 1,000 feet, it's from the central line of that road?
Yeah, coming all the way around. It's, again, it's theoretical.
Beginning, it starts at the beginning, beginning.
Oh, it starts there, not, because this road doesn't go anywhere.
No, this, this does a loop, and then that's another...
This is another, yeah, this is that pigtail off. It's two pigtails off of the, the pigtail here off the road and the pigtail here off the road.
And there's no turnaround on, there's no official turnaround on this other one?
Here?
Yeah.
Not official. There is a turnaround.
There's no tolls act or whatever.
No, there's a, there is a turnaround up top, but it's...
Okay.
Another piece we have to, another piece I have to solve.
It's about up to spec as the road is.
It's probably better than the road, oddly enough.
I'm just trying to figure out how, what, how does it even get before the planning board?
So, one of the, so again...
I don't think it has to with this. I mean, I don't, I...
It's not a subdivision.
It's not a minor or a major subdivision.
It's neither of those, it's a landowner changing his land.
It's not a building.
The only trouble you have with it is probably gonna be if somebody decides to sue you civilly for blocking off an access. Because it's your, if you own the roadway...
That's true.
You own the roadway. So if you decide you're gonna keep it open on that end and close this off, and I can't see any of your neighbors saying, no, we don't want to see that water flowing into the water like that. So you'd have an argument regardless, third court, saying you're bettering the surrounding area, you're bettering the water quality. You know, it's, it's not permitted. There's no permit to do site work like that, because that's not huge. You're not doing a gravel bit, you're not, that's road maintenance.
Again, if I went into a 21-foot cut, then that's a major project, but this...
Even, even that isn't.
Technically, he meets...
There's a yardage that you're not gonna meet.
Because it never comes into play because theoretically, it's not a dead end, even though this...
Well, the people that live on that road currently use the other entrance to get on it. The other one isn't even maintained right now. It's probably got three, four feet of snow on it.
So...
And it's too steep. I mean, I've tried to get up that road in my four-wheel drive truck, and I've had issues. I think this is a great idea, especially as shoreline, you know, to protect.
It'd be great to, to be able to review it and say, it's a great idea, let's, you know, you're, you're okay to do that because you...
Well, and I guess my question with what, with what you, with the limitations of the regulations, which we all have those issues depending on every town, would it be prudent for me to work with zoning, building, and road agent and fire to present it through them?
It's a private road, so you don't have to deal with the road agent.
I, I don't have to, but again, it all, it all lands on a public road.
Right.
So I'd like to at least have this...
Well, it comes up, right, but I mean...
I don't see how it even gets to us to...
Like, they're not gonna put, if there's already, if there's a culvert there, they're gonna be there, but they're not gonna add anything to it. They don't want the water going over.
It doesn't seem as though he is required to come to us at all. The only question is, if he's making a change, which now says that this road is no longer in conformance with the subdivision regulations, I don't know where that lead, where that leads.
I mean, we can certainly, we can, we can certainly build this and leave this open and not, and not vegetate it, but I think the vegetation would help the situation.
Nobody's gonna use the road anyway, unless you rebuild it in a way that it's gonna be able to maintain.
This fall, when they were...
If you paved it, then it makes a bigger problem, so I...
It would chase it too fast.
Nobody, I don't think anybody wants to see that happen personally.
Yeah, when they, when they logged this early in the fall, I actually tried to walk, just walk this, and they had broken it free with a skid steer, and it was, you couldn't even walk it. You were literally just, it was rolling out from underneath. I don't even...
So is the rest of the road, and as I recall, is not in great, I mean, it's not great for emergency vehicles to get in?
Yeah, prior to me purchasing, the homeowners together spent some money to regrade and do repairs up to here, and they stopped.
Okay.
They called it quits. And again, I don't blame them because they really didn't, they couldn't, no one lives here, and they had no idea how to make it better on the other side.
So you would be improving the road wherever it needed to be improved and eliminating this, but providing a way for emergency vehicles to turn around? Seems like that's more of a fire department issue than it is...
Which has been involved, and Brad's been up there, Bron's been up there from DPW.
You've got, what, it's about eight feet, an eight-foot rise from here to here?
Yeah.
And then it drops off again, or it's leveled right out?
It, it goes, it goes level, comes up, levels off, and then sits flat through here, relatively flat, which you can...
So is your proposal to knock out that eight foot right here?
No, I'd actually, I'd actually, I'd actually do a little bit of a, if I did anything, I'd do a little flattening here to get rid of the crown that's right here at the top.
Okay.
That would bring this to...
Is that this crown that's poking out here?
Nah, it's right about here, but yeah, it comes through. So right now, that section up here is running around elevation 550. It carries through to about, yeah, that probably is right about that point there. And that runs higher, so that runs around 552. And then there's a crown on this side of the road that hits 554. So it's... So it's it's got a knoll that they, you you can actually see it, they actually cut right through that knoll, but left still a little bit of that hump. So we flatten that out, um, bringing it across, right now, that's running at a three percent. So it's crowned here, flattens out, three percent right through here. Uh, jumps to nine through here, sixteen through here, nineteen to twenty-one across and down. So by doing, by, if I was building that up, I would be running closer to that would, that three would get cut, so that would bring it more to like a five to six, right through here. Uh, which would in transition change, take that uh typical nine and bring that closer to a seven. And then the sixteen, I'd be bringing that up and that would be brought somewhere to like a nine, nine and a half.
Access to the other property?
It's mine, it goes to.
Is is a road just an access?
It just, it comes to here and ends.
Okay.
And again, on the water comes, the way the water comes down through that property line, it comes down and across that anyhow, you can't really get there, it's a good hike if anyone wants to walk, I did it with my son. So that's the first piece of it, um, second piece, which I know I should come in for uh would be for a minor, would be to subdivide or I guess it's considered subdivision because right now, there's two lots presently here. Um, and what I'd be looking to do is convert it into three. And I know that would be part of the sub- that subdivision, um, and depending on, I I was talking to, we talked to again, um, Russ and Victor with regards to the potential, how to access these lots because you can easily come through here. Um, if we were to cut this road to bring it all the way around and cut everything down, it would make these these lots next to impossible to get to. Um, if we're doing a little bit of a cut and fill, it actually makes these lots quite minimal to access.
Lots that you wanna subdivide.
Yep.
There are currently.
This is currently two lots.
Correct, yep.
And then one makes three out of that.
Three, so you're you're essentially cutting both of those lots up. You're not leaving one and cutting the other down.
Yeah, yeah, one, one presently is one point eight six acres and the other one is one point five two acres.
So there's enough.
Six and eight, they're split in three lots.
Right, and there's enough acreage to meet the dumb requirements.
Yep.
Um, there's road frontage.
Yep.
That would, what what about the fact that it's an un um improved road?
It's that's still, you're still, your regulations still call it the same frontage distance?
Okay, alright.
So you, in your regs, you have.
Subdivision, a minor subdivision. There's no requirement, I know Tom has raised this a number of times about having to improve the road before you can get the subdivision as part of the subdivision, is that part of this or no?
Not from the way I read the subdivision, you have your um permit, your access to private roadway permit. That there's, you have a specific form that calls out when you're accessing a private way.
Yeah, a release.
It's a release from the town for, I guess, public safety?
The release is that you will maintain the road so that emergency services can get.
So there's a, there's a specific form you have to fill out with regards to accessing that that roadway.
But didn't this come up when we were dealing with that?
When they did the subdivision, was there any restrictions on further subdivisions?
No.
Okay.
So.
It actually, actually, it's all called out, it actually calls out in the deed and in the homeowners association. Um, that this, and it's kind of again, part, kind of weird that any future subdivision out here doesn't have to be part of the association. Again, strange, I wouldn't do it that way because if you're, if you're accessing and sharing the rights to the roads, you would think you'd share the cost of maintaining the road, it's, but again, the Ames family that did it did the subdivision for the sole purpose of maintaining complete rights of everything to themselves.
Who else would be using that section of road, the lots, the road shoots off there, is that, what's what's over there?
Uh, this goes up to the back property, um, there's that new house, the driveway's right here, plus or minus. Um, there is one lot here, which is this, I I guess I'd call it a hammerhead lot.
Flag lot.
Flag lot, and then presently, this lot is using it, but they don't have the rights to, their rights are actually off of Bonneman.
Okay.
And then you have, this house is not built.
Somewhere, I I thought that we had dealt with this um once before on um the gentleman that wants to subdivide part of the, he owns the roads and he was gonna subdivide it off.
Robert Hallian, I think.
Yeah, right, that, the last meeting, it, wasn't there some issue about um him having to they couldn't subdivide certain, in a certain way because he actually would have to improve the road to current standards?
Yes.
I think this is a great idea, it just, it sounds to me like if you're gonna come in for a a subdivision, that's the time that we can waive the thousand feet.
Right, and and waive some of the upgrades.
And and, right.
Okay.
I think it needs.
Tie it together, well, again.
I think that's the way to do it because otherwise, we don't really have any any way to deal with that, thousand feet, there's no.
And it works out well for me because I can actually show the driveway connections at the same time, which will tie out its parography through there.
So so those, the two existing lots, uh thirty-one and thirty-two, do they have access to the water?
Yes.
Of of on one of these lots?
They all have access to it.
Okay, so if you were to subdivide that and create three, one of those lots would not have access to the water?
Correct.
Okay. Decked is, I've got the minutes from, this is from Robert Hallian, at the top of the page referencing.
That wouldn't have access because of the association, all right?
No, because you need another hundred and fifty feet of furniture for another one.
Oh.
It's pre, yeah, it's a pre-existing association.
Right.
And under, under the new state regs, you have a limitation and a specific requirement every time you add.
So so I think what Tom was quoting in this other case um was, we have the right to waive it.
Correct.
But it, but it is a requirement, that's theoretically on the subdivision lots.
That'd be a town stack.
You would have to build, rebuild the road to town specs.
Right.
Which, I don't think, you probably can't do it because of the grades.
You can't, you can't cuz it would hit it.
Right.
I I I even, even with a twenty-one foot cut, I couldn't hit eight.
Even with that, we told him that it would be in his favor to get the association going, so that he didn't have to take care of the road.
And that's what he wants to do.
Yeah, okay, this has already got an association, so.
Yeah, and again, we we have a full, yeah, it has the original association and I already have both documents, the the beach association and the road association, a hundred percent ready to hand to them, but I wanted to stop talking to the town first to just see where I'm headed with everything.
I think you wrap it all together and do it all at once and then we get to deal with the waiver on upgrade on the road and you know, you you're actually gonna upgrade the road, you're just not gonna upgrade it to town standards. And the right of way is sufficient.
It's fifty feet all the way through that.
That's big enough.
Yeah, it meets, uh, other than grade, it meets, it meets, well, grade in this one hip in turn, but the the turn really, you drive it, isn't really there, but I haven't, we haven't located this yet, once we locate it, we'll figure out why that doesn't seem to actually have that reverse curve.
Probably cuz it doesn't make sense to put a reverse one in.
Either that or they could be coming right across this property point, again, it's the engineering that created the subdivision was.
I don't see a lot of pins on it, so it's, you know, I see some down here, but I'm not seeing up in that.
All of these, these, all these lots, which were all pinned out, all the way through. Um, and I've actually found almost all of them, um, there was a, this lot here is a little strange again because it was done once. Um, and actually, when I was walking this road, when I, after I purchased it, I actually took a picture of one of the iron pins pulled out laying on the ground next to that other pin, so, which always makes me excited. So that's kind of.
It seems it makes sense and like you said, it'd probably be best to do it all at once, just to get the neighbors on board with it and.
Yeah, and when we, you know, they would all have to be noticed, you know, as as abutters and.
I don't know how many abutters you'd have, I think it's a hundred feet from your property lines, right, Victor?
I'm sorry.
All the abutters within a hundred feet of the property line gonna be noticed?
Yes.
So all the ones over here, which with one acre lots could be up there.
Next to a cross diagonal.
Because this is actually, this parcel is big and has the wetlands next to it, the one acres are further, or because this is right after the corner.
Yeah.
So you don't have.
Is there anything behind you, around you?
Pickpocket, which goes way out back, nobody tied to that, um, the only other ones you would have, well, now these was this, a hundred feet?
Hundred foot outside of your property line.
Yeah, so outside of the property being subdivided.
Wherever, wherever the outside part, out, the whole, the whole plot.
Well, this is being subdivided.
Right.
Not this. It goes a hundred feet outside of this.
Okay, yeah.
Right.
Well, the roadway would be part of it, if it's part of it. Not that it's gonna matter much, it's gonna add a couple over there probably.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Not trying to.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to envision the engineering that I'm tying to these three lots.
It's a nightmare when it's done like that, so can't be any worse than uh several that had like a hundred something abutters. Francis Road.
Oh, we have, I I've dealt with ones that go thousands of feet and have crossed into different towns and states and across rivers and we've, we've done all sorts of different ones, but um, so when I'm showing, if so if I'm showing, if I'm working on this and we're tying this piece into it. Would you be looking for a full perimeter survey of the back fifty to do that? Because that's my only catch.
Past, we've waived, we've waived that.
Okay, only because if if I'm, if I'm jumping in from here to here to all of this, now it's, that becomes a, I don't mind doing it in the future, but that that becomes a huge process for what we're trying to accomplish.
We typically wanna see what's. What is the road tied to for ownership, the big parcel? It's not tied to these two parcels here, is it?
No.
So the road doesn't really come into play.
That's, that's where I was, that's where I was trying to.
In terms of.
Well, you wanna add, you wanna take these two lots and make them into three?
Yep.
And is that?
This is, this is future.
Down the road, okay.
Again, I was, I was doing a layout with regards to um the thought process of.
Your driveway's gonna go up through there?
It actually comes way over here.
Okay, so that that would be your driveway for the backland?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be completely different, separate subdivision.
Right, not familiar with that. This is a better picture of the other one. People can see the yellow. So this is the road, this is the roadway, it comes all up here, it zigs back around, and this is yeah, this is a little cabin that you can see from the lake.
Okay, yeah.
And pickpocket is way out here.
Yep.
And this sits up, if if you look from the lake or from across the lake, um, on the main roadway there, uh, this is the high knoll that sits well above the cabin, where you can see that it was clear cut, that's actually right here. Which is, I think the actual purpose of this one, one two acre parcel being deeded over from, I think, sister to brother or whatever it was, was to actually capture the knoll, it sits right on top of it. We were, we were trying to chase back and figure out why they did that two acre, because it wasn't ever, there was no other previous deed that had it like missing. It just all of a sudden came into play, so I'm guessing we tried to capture the high point.
So if if the road is not tied to this subdivision, but you wanna improve the road access to.
For the, for that subdivision, yes.
So um, I I think we could still deal with it all as part of that, even though the road is not actively part of the land that's being subdivided. If you would've come in to subdivide off the big lot and the road was tied to that, then the road would come.
Right, so, so again, when I, the reason for doing this is, again, the concept of uh family compound?
Family compound.
Family compound, you don't need to do something.
No, 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 but one of the, one of the comments in your uh notes in the family compound was to look at it as if you were ever gonna subdivide so that way, if anything ever happened, so I was trying.
Feasible, yeah.
So I was trying to plan ahead to see how things laid out and what it did.
The trouble with most family compounds that they run into is they all share one septic, they share one well, and that's just, that's where it really gets messy.
Yeah, no, actually.
So I would say that that the plan should be circulated through fire and and police and and get a recommendation from them that this change on the road makes sense.
Yes.
You know, that they're in favor of it or recommend that it be done to eliminate the problem that exists here. And then we can, I think we can improve the the whole, the whole thing, one, one.
I'd almost go ahead and put those in with it.
Well, it becomes a major. Becomes a ma, yeah, it becomes a major and then I, then I, then I start dealing with tax, the tax end of things, because right now, this, these are these are pulled out. These are pulled out, this is not. And I'll have to figure that out when I actually get to the point of building something up there.
Well, you can do, you can do a minor on on these lots.
Right, I can do a minor.
On note, on on that subdivision, there's no reason to put it together.
Penalty on the smaller area.
Oh, you can?
Yeah, as long as you have ten acres in current use.
Okay.
Continues, it has to all touch, which I'm sure you're gonna be.
Minimum of ten.
Minimum ten.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's fifty, so I think there's plenty of flex, plenty of flexibility. So yeah, so what, I guess I'll show this as a minor, what I guess, what I'll try to do is show, I'll create, I'll work with the engineer to create a uh a tie-in plan for the driveways to this, which will show the changes or modifications to this.
To the road.
Does that make sense? So that way, it's tied to the, to these lots and the driveways associated with there, and for now, I'll keep I'll keep the work, which I think I can, um, within that property bound.
It'd almost be worth it where this one's more, much larger to make it an actual turnaround, I don't know if the grade will allow that, but.
Uh, it's got that knoll, yeah, it has that, it it might be possible. I think the first thing I have to look at is gonna be the driveway access part of it. Um, because talking to Russ, he, I had originally had the concept of maybe just pulling here and doing a common drive to cover the three. He said if I get into three, well, it's gonna be a subdivision anyhow, he was saying that he would want that road.
Right.
It's, yeah, he would say that that road, that would be considered a roadway as compared to a driveway.
I only say that cuz you're gonna, if you're gonna raise it up over here, right?
Right.
You're gonna need material anyways.
Yep.
I mean, that'll give you a base material and you can put your gravel and everything over that.
That's true, and I might be able to actually just do a common drive here because that's still a pretty decent platform right in here to utilize this flat point to come up, turn around for the two driveways and have this by itself.
So you're saying, take a piece of that.
Take a, take a check out, so there's room to turn around.
Okay, but then that would have to be a deeded ownership.
He owns, if he owns both lots, so that's just a lot.
What, actually, I wouldn't even do a lot line adjustment, I would do, I would do an easement because we could keep the, we could keep the actual gravel base in any size we want, we can do a simple easement across for for emergency egress. Because you can do them for drainage, you can do them, you can do an easement for pretty much anything, so that would actually allow to handle the drainage in that location, handle the the fire access, you know, emergency access.
That's part of that lot.
Yeah, because otherwise, it gets really confusing of trying to redefine that law.
And you don't want it to get somebody to make the assumption that it's more than three lots now, so all of a sudden.
Well, even outside of that, now, then you end up with something that's a variable width, you go from fifty to fifty-five to sixty to seventy in a curve. It just becomes kind of a little, it, it's a complex enough wavy road for no purpose already that doesn't actually land where the road does that I have to try to work with to start with, so.
Yeah.
But again, I can work with, you know, again, police and fire to get their vehicle turnaround, because every, I don't know what you're carrying, if you, if you have ladders and stuff like that, but every every one of them, especially if you're in the, into the newest series, they're big, and their their turnaround radius is getting almost, almost ridiculous.
They don't turn around.
We actually just picked one up where they're actually building it right now for our town and um, they were just going through a lot of the different regs.
I'm pretty sure the biggest truck we have will not go down that road period and be sitting down by the water, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're, you have a tough time here on this transition, because there's no radius.
The smaller trucks will make that.
Right, but on a bigger truck.
The the big truck that's uh carries all the water probably won't be getting up there.
So are they gonna pump up the hill?
Yeah.
Just lay hose and.
Well, that's the other thing, so it's a thousand feet and that that thousand foot rule, basically, all the fire, all your class A fire trucks carry a thousand feet of hose.
Oh, okay.
On the back of the truck, they're blocking their hose, and that's where that comes into play is the thousand foot.
Should, should I look at trying to, when, when we replant this, should we try to keep a walking path? Something that is mannerable. I mean, I, I know in the winter it doesn't help you, but for everyday use, I mean...
So, this is how I would look at it and I, it was just the standard rule, if there's a fire here, let's just say the house is up here, driveway's here. The first truck's going to come in, right, second truck's going to back in, drop a line out.
Yep.
And then, or there's going to be multiple trucks packed in, which is usually what happens, so the, the, the back end of the line is going to be here, so you're going to have multiple trucks.
So actually, if I'm able to come up with a way to, to do a common drive here and leave this whole space open with no driveway inching onto it, it gives you a lot more air for turnaround and emergency parking to then be able to access the, the two houses without blocking yourself in.
It does.
Okay.
I mean, that's, I mean, something like down here, it always turns in, like any tight roads, you sound like you've been on the department, you see it, it always turns into every truck, everybody pulls in and then it's one hose to the next and the next and the next and then they finally, we get it out.
Right, yep. Okay. Yeah, and again, what, what we'll do is we'll upgrade, we'll not only upgrade working on the pitch of the road, but we'll, we'll work on trying to get that, get the width back.
Yeah.
And that actually becomes a question I don't know the answer to. With regards to tree management on the edge of, of roads, do I need to put in for a cutting application for that, or is that under something different?
That's remnants.
Remnants, okay, because...
What do you talk when...
So along the edge of this road, there's, there's some mature trees that are within the fifty foot right-of-way that I want to take down. First of all, the canopy doesn't allow for melt and secondly, when we go to modify and clean this up, I would need to take them down. You're not talking, I mean, you're talking maybe a couple dozen by the time you talk from here to there. But it's not one lot, so I don't know really, is there...
I don't know, is there anything on the shoreline? It is within the shoreline, so I don't know how that works.
It's outside the two fifty.
Yeah, I mean, it is outside the two fifty.
Now, some of it's outside of the two fifty, it's a mix.
Yeah, you're, so you're talking all along, on the top part of Silver Hill?
Just, yeah.
Yeah, I got to double check, I think that is out of the two.
It's, it's, it's a crossover. Because we're at one...
I think, because the...
You're going to be, she can be pretty darn close to it.
But either way, the requirement up in that area from the shoreline is to just, is to remain, twenty-five percent of the area is to remain in town. So you're pretty much, you're good as far as that's concerned.
This one actually has a two fifty.
Two fifty, except that comes right across, yeah.
The lower part of the road.
Yeah.
Looks good, and it makes sense, it definitely takes a lot of work.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's, it's not, there's, there's more just a researcher trying to actually get back to the plan and get that correct, because, you know, this, this lot creates, created its own challenge with regards to their approach to things as well as, they just had an engineer come out and recreate a plan and they recreated a deed that doesn't even match the previous deed. So it, there's, you know, when bad engineering chases bad engineering, it makes things a little complex. But luckily, everything that I'm working on, it doesn't require anything to deal with that, which is good.
So, curious, why is, what's the red line here? Is that...
The red line is actually the original deed reference line.
The original deed, okay.
And this, this line is the new, the new line that they just created to make the lineal distance that was on the original paperwork deed. So basically, they just said, all right, when they, so what they did is, and it took me a while to figure it out, but basically what they did is they took these distances and curvatures and just mirror imaged them. That's a great concept and it helped them a little bit, but it doesn't match the deed, which goes back to...
Oh, so they just flipped it on to the other side of the road?
They just did a fifty foot offset.
It all must be the same on the other side, only that's not what the deed said.
Right, the deed, the deed called it a straight line from point A to point B with specific distance, so.
Interesting approach.
Again, every now and then you see some interesting things.
It's a lot of homework to do and researching.
Yeah, we've actually done, again, we have...
I can see you've been doing something.
Yeah, we actually, I actually even, I actually even found a piece that the town was trying to figure out who owned it. It's actually in your tax map, there's a big question mark. Over here, there's actually a sixteen foot piece of property that ties to this fifty acre parcel that goes way back to early seventies also. I don't know why it actually goes out into Effingham, so I'm not, no, no idea why, but again, it looks like the Ames, I don't know the history of the Ames family, but they must have owned like tons of land around here, because it...
No, I think they're one of the originals, aren't they?
Could be.
Yeah, because when you start referencing it, and actually the cabin up top is actually kind of really interesting. It was built in the eighties, but they have like a whole family listing of Ames kids on the door with like notch marks for the heights and stuff like that, it's kind of cool. I like the history, actually, the, the town itself's history is kind of interesting. It's almost a mirror image of my town. I grew up in Pepperell, Massachusetts, and we were a mill, paper mill town. That in the thirties and forties, most of it went away, and one mill carried through all the way up into the eighties until that finally went away. But you see a lot, I mean, just looking at the pictures outside, it, it's amazing the similarities, so it's kind of interesting. Looking at the rail, we had two main rivers that came through our town, we had two main railways that came through our town because we have, Fort Devens was right through us over on the other side in air. So we, we actually had B and M coming right through, and we were a big spare spot, spot for everybody, so, kind of interesting.
Alright.
Alright, so I'll make it, I'll work in that approach from here. Again, tie this into the driveway part of that. I'll keep working with Russ and Victor and...
Sounds good.
See if there's anything they want. Alright, appreciate your time.
Great.
And I think these guys have my phone number, if you guys ever have any questions, please feel free to...
Oh, we'll see you again.
Yeah.
Board of Business, release of escrow.
Okay, yeah, just going through, cleaning up some of these past cases, so, this was for days for Wakefield Garage. There actually was some inquiries to Garapie, I've got an email here saying that he's waiving the fees, he didn't charge the town anything. So we're asking to release four hundred dollars plus accrued interest for the planned plane professional service fees that we're not used to.
I'm abstaining from that.
So I'll make a motion that we can release those fees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
David staying.
Alright, we've got minutes. Oh, any, um, any, oh, we have other business. Well, that's correspondence, so let's do the minutes first, that's probably the agenda first. So is that February seven, oh, January twenty-four? Okay, Tom was, is not here.
I was not here.
I was here for both.
I was here.
Okay, so, who can vote, though? Do we have three people that can vote? No. We need John here or Tom.
For the twenty-fourth?
For the, for the twenty-fourth. That'd be three people that were at the meeting to approve the minutes.
Yeah.
So all that's...
Lydia?
Huh?
No.
Lydia?
No, no.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February seventh.
Second.
Alright, any comments over the minute, other than the fact that they're excellent as usual?
I was going to say that.
Definitely more trees being cut down?
I'm sorry.
Alright, yeah, we'll get a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, correspondence, new conservation commission bylaws.
I'm sorry, did you accept February seventh and February twenty-first?
No, no.
No.
Oh, you didn't have, I'm sorry, just the...
We don't have the twenty-first.
Twenty-fourth.
It was a January twenty-fourth.
We did February seventh.
We did February seventh.
We should have February twenty-first.
Where's, we didn't get, uh...
There's probably two sets in there?
January twenty-fourth.
January twenty-fourth and February seventh.
Oh, did, okay, that was...
We can do it next meeting.
The twenty-first of February?
Sorry.
Will you have a copy?
Yeah, that was the last meeting.
Well, you set up...
I want some things.
Okay, I wasn't there.
Yes.
We can do it.
No, I wasn't there.
None of us were here.
Donna was here, I was here, but we need Tom, we need Tom.
Should table those two?
You have to table them, yeah. Alright, moving right along, we're getting the business out of the way quickly. I'm not doing anything. New conservation commission bylaws.
Just ask the distributor to boards.
Okay, we don't need to act.
We don't need to do anything with this, just receive it. There's Tom's copy.
So this doesn't, doesn't affect us in any way, other than just information?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, I don't see any public, so there can't be any public comment if there's no public. The next meeting date is the twenty-first of March. So I think we're ready for an adjournment, a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.